So, let's kind of settle in here and little silence, respect for the flag, et cetera.
We'd like to get started?
Yeah, yeah. Is Janelle here? Janelle? Oh, Janelle. Okay. Okay. Are we ready yet? Patrick, I've never seen you, so. Uh, we also have to do public, um, comment. Alright, let's officially start the meeting. Our special study session of June 25th. It is now time to start. And let's start with any public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment tonight? None? Well, we only have one, uh, one item on the agenda, so I don't, I think the agenda could be approved pretty easily. Patrick, do you want to introduce our guest tonight?
I will start off. Thank you, Council. And first of all, thank you for scheduling the special meeting on a Wednesday. So you can all tell you had something else going on. You come very relaxed and in your shorts. That's great. So tonight, we have our consultants here with C. Walden Handfling, which you've met four of these folks, I believe, right? I'll let them introduce themselves. And there's a couple of new faces here, too. And tonight's, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to go over the results of the phone poll that was conducted June 17th, 18th, and 19th, I believe. So with further ado, I'll pass it on and let everybody introduce themselves. And gentlemen, just push the button to make sure the green light is on before you speak.
Hi, Josh Handfling, C. Walden Handfling, Public Affairs.
Chris Keating from Keating Research.
RD C. Walden, C. Walden Handfling.
Colin Kennedy from Colorado Communicate.
Shannon Fender from C. Walden Handfling.
Jake Martin with Keating Research.
Like to start. RD?
Mayor and Council members, thank you so much for having us tonight. We've been looking forward to this, uh, this evening. The format for tonight is we're going to have Chris Keating from Keating Research, who our firm has used over a number of years. As you know, when we met with Patrick and your team, when we talked about how we would move forward, we always, we like the live poll as opposed to the push poll. When you know, in the samples, you get push one, two, or three. So I think you'll be pleased with the feedback and the accountability that comes with using someone like Chris Keating. And so, um, when we began looking at conducting the poll, I want to thank you for the time that you spent with us. It was very helpful. And we learned a lot from all of you. We went out and toured your wonderful city. And we're able to put the conversation to really seeing all of the great activity you have. And, um, and people are very proud here, not only from a safety standpoint, but from their, your park systems that you've built. And so, um, it's, it's nice to see that there's a, there's a real strong pride here in Wheat Ridge. And so, um, tonight, we're going to have Chris go through the presentation, and then we'll ask questions. And then, um, Mayor and Council members, we'd like to close on the next steps. As you know, this is, um, this is one step in hearing from your constituents about what they think, um, at this moment in time. And, uh, with the city manager pushing for a very strong public process, we'll be conducting town hall meetings. And hopefully going back to the citizens so that in addition to the start of a poll, looking at a possible, um, measure in the fall. It's really the beginning of over the next couple of months in, in the public process. And I think that's important for your citizens to know that their input will have a direct impact. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Chris Keating.
Okay, thank you. What I have is a PowerPoint presentation. I think there are maybe seventeen slides or so. And so I want to go through that with you. And then, like RD said, we're going to take some questions. Whatever you guys want to ask, answer about that. Do you want me to go up here? Is that better? Okay. Um, I just want to make sure that I can. Alright, so first of all, my, um, I just have one slide here that talks a little bit about my firm. And basically, you know, I've been doing this for like, uh, almost twenty years now, doing telephone surveys. And, uh, I always think it's important to, to ask the voters, uh, what, you know, what in particular is important, you know? How do they feel about things? What are their attitudes? And, uh, and I think it, doing a telephone poll and actually talk, and talking to actual voters is, I think, the most effective way to accomplish it. So I just have a few, uh, few highlights there. I don't want to go into that. If we go into the next slide, RD, do you want to talk about your company here a little bit?
Yes. Uh, we've worked since nineteen ninety-eight on several bond initiatives. I think for the, um, for tonight, for the credibility, whether it was in Denver or Commerce City, we've spent a lot of time over the years since nineteen ninety-eight, back to, um, when Mayor Webb went for the first bond projects for neighborhoods. And then, and then of late in Commerce City, we teamed up with Colin Kennedy from Colorado Communicate. And so that same team has been established to hopefully help Wheat Ridge as they decide to move forward or not in the fall after they've heard from their citizens. And I would just like to say that, if you go back and look at Chris Keating's history, you'll find that over the years, just as in Commerce City and the two K, two K campaign last November, which was successful, uh, the numbers were, were spot on when they did the poll, the poll in Commerce City. And it gave them an accurate, um, message as the elected leaders who put themselves out before the citizens in the, in the city to give them an accurate read of what folks, not only the attitude they felt towards the administration, but towards the city itself. And, um, and I think, I'm going to compliment, compliment you all. I've seen where folks have not done that. And, um, and they don't take the time to do the legwork of really hearing from the citizens. And, um, not to highlight the ones that were not successful, but you, there's, folks have not always been successful. So I compliment you on the front end of taking the time to really try to make sure that you're understanding where your citizens are at this moment in time. And then obviously, we have our staff here. So thank you.
Alright, on this slide, I want to talk a little bit, make sure we're all on the same page on the methodology for the poll. Uh, and if you guys have any questions, you might want to just ask them right now on the methodology. So we conducted six hundred and three live telephone interviews among likely November twenty fourteen voters. So we screened them to make sure they're definitely, or probably, uh, going to vote in November twenty fourteen. Because we're talking, what we're going to be talking about here is a ballot measure. And, uh, these interviews are conducted just as recent as last week, so it's hot off the presses. And we have, this is a representative sample of voters in Wheat Ridge by, based on gender, age, party affiliation, ethnicity, and around the city. So our goal, my goal, my company's goal is always to accurately represent voters. Another important point is here, we include, we called cell phones, forty-four percent of the respondents conducted the interview by cellphone, on their cellphone. And I think it's important in this day and age, when we're talking about, this is a live telephone interview with an interviewer and a respondent interacting. A lot of people only have cell phones. And forty-four percent is, is a great number. Obviously, this poll is conducted by Keating Research. If we go on to the next slide, I want to start right in. One of the first questions that we always ask in a poll like this is generally speaking, do you think things in Wheat Ridge are heading in the right direction? Or are they heading in the wrong direction? As you can see in the blue, sixty-one percent, six out of ten voters said things in Wheat Ridge are heading in the right direction versus nineteen percent saying wrong direction. So three to one right direction versus wrong direction. We got about twenty percent, we got twenty percent that say, I don't know. They're not necessarily paying attention to the way things are going, that kind of thing. So they like the direction, in general, the direction that the, the city is headed. And that's, that's, you know, across, if you look across gender, if you look across age, different ages, different areas around the city, you see a majority of, of voters saying that the city's heading in the right direction. And younger voters in particular in this city are optimistic about it. But we typically see that, um, in questions like this. Younger voters tend to be more optimistic, and you see it here. If you go on to the next slide, so they're feeling good about the city. There's no doubt about that. We asked, uh, do you have a favorable or unfavorable opinion of the Wheat Ridge City Council? And here we see a majority, fifty-six percent favorable. Versus only twenty percent unfavorable. Twenty-four percent don't know. Again, they're not paying attention necessarily to what's going on. So we have almost three to one there, just under three to one favorable to unfavorable. So, um, as a body, you must be doing something right. This is not, I don't always see this number in cities. Uh, so a thr, almost three to one majority is a pretty good place to be. And again, this is across all political persuasions. Okay? This is a, a political body. And we see strong numbers, strong majorities favorable across all political persuasions here. And that's a good thing to, good thing to see. We're not, we're not dividing up the city. The city is, is firmly behind. So we're starting off with voters feeling good about this city, feeling good about this body who's going to make decisions on, uh, on this ballot measure. So I think it's a good place to start. There's no doubt about that. If you go on to the next slide, we wanted to, to just show you guys what, you know, what is it that they like about the city? Why do they think it's headed in the right direction? So we tested a number of specific areas about Wheat Ridge's, uh, city services. And we asked the question, is Wheat Ridge government doing an excellent, good, fair, or poor job on that particular area of service? And here, one thing we know is that Wheat Ridge is doing a, a good job providing parks and recreation opportunities. If we look here at the top two, um, oh, if we go back one slide. Are we missing a slide? Uh, do you have, you, are we missing a slide in the, uh, in the handoffs? Okay. Well, alright, let me, let me just say that, um, eighty-seven percent, when we asked about how well is Wheat Ridge government doing on providing quality parks and recreation opportunities, eighty-seven percent of voters said they're doing an excellent and good job. When we asked about providing a recreation center that serves the needs of Wheat Ridge citizens, eighty-three percent said that they're doing, that you're doing an excellent or good job. So we get almost nine out of ten and eight out of ten saying you're doing an excellent or good job on providing parks and recreation opportunities. Those are outstanding numbers. And I'm not talking about this slide here because for some reason it's missing. We also asked about providing activities for active adults and seniors. And we get sixty-four percent that are saying they're doing an excellent or good job. So six out of ten voters. And when you look at those age fifty and above who are more likely to use these services, you get seventy percent saying you're doing an excellent or good job. And we, when we ask about providing activities for children and youth, we get six out of ten voters saying you're doing an excellent or good job. And, and in this case, when you look at younger voters, those eighteen to forty-nine, who are more likely to use that service, activities for children and youth, you get an even higher number, sixty-seven percent excellent or good. So what I like about is those who are using the services like it even more than otherwise. So what, when they're participating in it, uh, they're liking it. So you're doing a good job providing the recreation needs. And, and you understand that, that folks in Wheat Ridge, you know, they like their outdoor recreation. So if we go on to the next slide, which is actually in here, and I apologize for that. Uh, we also asked about a few more items here. How about, we said, how about keeping the people of Wheat Ridge safe? And here we get seventy-eight percent saying you're doing excellent, good job. So there really is not a concern about safety in this city. And I, I haven't seen a number like that necessarily in other cities either. That is a, that is a big number on safety. They're feeling pretty safe, uh, in the city of Wheat Ridge. Now, we go down to the next item on the list, providing road and street maintenance. Now here, we still have a majority saying excellent or good. But there really is a more divided response when it becomes to road and street maintenance. We get forty-three percent saying only fair or good job. And, and, and the longer that you've been living in Wheat Ridge, the more likely you are to say that the road and street maintenance is a fair or good job. Providing pedestrian walkways and bike lanes, we get fifty-three percent majority saying excellent or good. And forty-three percent saying fair or poor. So again, a more divided response. When you look at, there's one item, so all in all, all these items that I've talked about, you get a majority saying an excellent or good job. Parks and recreation, uh, safety getting the highest numbers. When you look at improving traffic flow and reducing congestion, that's the one area where you get a majority saying only fair or poor job. So that really gives us a good idea of where the city is doing well. And where the city, um, can do with some improvements. And that mainly being the traffic and congestion that they're seeing. So I want to go, I want to go into the, on the next slide, it should be, uh, we asked, uh, here, at this point in the poll, we split the sample, half the sample, so we have originally started with six hundred, three hundred heard about a half percent sales tax ballot measure. And we read, if you look at the language up here, we read it in terms of ta, the Tabor language that you have to use on the ballot. Shall taxes be increased by three million dollars by increasing the sales tax rate by half of one percent to obtain bonds to pay for three specific improvement projects? And we listed the three projects, Anderson Park, out, uh, existing parks like Anderson Park, revitalization of Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corner, including the Southwest Corner, Thirty-eighth and Wadsworth, and road and bridge and drainage system maintenance and improvements. So we specifically read that. If you go to the next slide, the half percent sales tax increase, uh, receives more, majority support. So if you look down on the bottom, the blue bar on the bottom, fifty-seven percent said they vote yes versus thirty-seven percent that said they vote no. On this measure. And that includes twenty-seven percent definitely yes, and thirty percent that say they'll probably vote yes or lean yes. So we have a twenty point, a twenty point advantage on yes versus no, uh, here in Wheat Ridge. On a half, that's on the half percent. And I think one thing to understand here is that twenty-seven percent definitely yes is a good base to start from. You don't always see, uh, that kind of base when you're, when you're talking about a tax measure. You might see seventeen percent, twenty percent. But if you can get up to twenty-seven percent, you're getting close to thirty percent of folks that say definitely yes that are going to be with you. The folks that we need to keep are that thirty percent in there. We need to hold on to those if, if you decide to go forward with this. I'll go on to the next slide. The other half of the sample heard about a one percent sales tax. Uh, in this case, since it's a one percent, they get six million dollars. And here, we gave them five specific projects. So we added, uh, number two, which was the new satellite recreation center on the east side of Wheat Ridge. And bike lanes and pedestrian walkways. Otherwise, it's the same. So they're, it's going to, it's a little bit bigger of a taxing increase, sales tax increase, but they get a little bit more. And if you go to the next slide, so this other half of the sample, they only heard the one percent increase. We get almost exactly the same number. And that's the beauty of statistics. Uh, when you divide the sample here, um, we see they're really not, uh, registering a difference between a half percent sales tax or a one percent sales tax. And part of it is they get a little more. Um, but I think for a large part, they're not, they're not registering that, when, when they hear them separately, they're not registering that one percent versus half is a significant difference. So we get, again, here we get fifty-eight percent, if you saw, remember on the previous slide, we had fifty-seven percent. That is statistically the same number. Thirty percent in this case saying they definitely would vote yes. So again, that is a good, a very good base of support. And you just, we just got to hold, if we're going to move forward, you got to hold on to that twenty-eight percent that say they're probably going to vote yes or lean. Voting yes. So I want to tell you, just tell you, since there's no difference between the two really, I want to tell you just a little bit of what, what we're seeing underneath these numbers. If we go to the next slide, I'm just going to break out younger voters on the left-hand side and older voters on the right-hand side. So if you're younger, eighteen to forty-nine, uh, we asked, we asked if you would vote yes or no. Remember, we had fifty-seven percent or fifty-eight percent overall. Younger voters are at seventy percent yes versus older voters at forty, are basically divided into forty-seven and forty-two. So we have a huge, uh, a huge support among the younger voters. And that's typical, that's pretty typical of what we might see in a, in a tax increase. Older voters usually less likely support. The thing I would point out here is this support from younger voters is much larger than I might normally see it. It's a big, it's a big number, and it is driving, uh, driving home that fifty-seven percent that we're seeing. Was, was there a question? I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Yeah, so just a quick question when it comes to the breakdown of those two voters and the six hundred and, and change of, of people you called. Was it also equally, you know, like three hundred were in one age group and three hundred were in the other age group? Was there a majority age fifty plus? Do you have that?
I, we, uh, we have that numbers. Uh, in, in a non-presidential year, you get a lot of older voters, in, in that type of election. So we actually had, uh, about over sixty percent of voters over age fifty. Versus thirty-eight, it's sixty-two over age fif, fifty and older, and thirty-eight percent eighteen to forty-nine. I think that's realistic. We're trying to be realistic here. We know that younger voters are supportive. And they're going to drive, they're going to drive that yes vote. Um, but we want to be realistic in terms of what the turnout is.
Yes, I agree. I was just curious if, if it was, how it was distributed.
Yes. Did, did, so you waited, you waited that the older vo, the older voters were waited sixty percent of the survey?
They were sixty percent of the voters. No, there's no, it's not waited. That's how many interviews we did. It's sixty-two percent.
And Chris, that probably needs a little explanation. In polling lingo, waiting has, has, uh, uh, technical terminology.
Oh, okay.
Meaning that i- in some instances where you have a hard time getting the proper amount of interviews in, you, you end up waiting the sample so that you can get a proper, um, sampling for what you think the electorate is going to be. What Chris is saying is that, no, he didn't have to wait. The amount of interviews, the amount of interviews that he received over fifty were sixty-two percent of the sample.
Okay, I asked, I asked the question because I think older voters, voters over fifty are more than sixty percent of a typical election. So I'd like to know how you went about deciding to, uh, do sixty percent older people.
Uh, we did analysis of the turnout based on those voters who voted in, uh, two thousand and ten, who are most likely to turn out in two thousand and fourteen. So we actually called off the voter list. And said typically about eighty percent of those who turn out in twenty four, in, in the midterm, what you would call midterm election, uh, are those who, who turned out in the previous midterm election. Uh, so we, we went based on about eighty percent, twenty percent there. And that's what, that's what we were looking for. We took that distribution and, and took the age distribution straight out of that. So this is straight out of the voter list. So I'm not sure what the, what the difference in opinion is there. But I took, the numbers that I have are straight out of the voter list, straight out of what I expect the turnout to be. It may be a little bit older. We don't, we don't know exactly what it's going to be. But typically, in, in a presidential year, it's about fifty-fifty, uh, over age fifty and under age fifty. Here, uh, it's, it's more.
It's always older here.
Right.
Uh, I, I have the statistics also. I, I think that sixty percent is low, but nonetheless.
Well, it's sixty-two, though.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so, let's see. We're on, on the next slide. Uh, we also, I also broke it out, um, based on education. And so I just wanted to show you another breakout. Those who, who have a college, a four-year college degree. a college, a four-year college degree or more are much more supportive than those who are less educated. And that has to do with maybe a, a little bit of a tax sensitivity. We get more than two to one support from those who have a college degree or more, and it's about even a seven-point advantage, forty-nine, forty-two, among those who do not. So, and those who have a college degree do also tend to be younger. So like we saw on the last slide, we get more support from younger, more support from those with a college degree. And again, when you're older, maybe you're on a fixed income, you're a little, little more sensitive to some kind of a tax increase. Or if you don't have a college degree, maybe you have less money, you might be more sensitive to a tax increase.
I, I do have a question on the, on the one before. Looking at the younger voters overwhelmingly support the measure. If you average those out, even though there will be a stronger response from the older voters, it looks to me that it still has a positive direction.
Right.
And, and it's not gonna be just somewhere in between, but it might lead more to the, to the lower end, but still positive.
Right, so if you, if you take the average over those, it's, we end up at the fifty-seven percent, around fifty-seven percent that we started with, right?
Got it. Thanks.
So it does lean towards, we get a five-point lead on the older and a forty-five point lead on the younger voters, giving us that twenty-point lead overall. So if we go on to the next slide, we also asked the yes, if you look on the left-hand side, we asked the yes voters, what is, and again, this is on, among those who say they're gonna vote yes, that fifty-seven percent. We said, what are the main reasons you would vote yes on this measure? We get thirty-one percent, and this, they gave us these responses verbatim. We typed them in verbatim and we coded them into these different categories. So they could say whatever they wanted on this. Thirty-one percent said something about improving and updating, making a better city. And I wanna, I just want to read a couple of the, the, of quotes of some of the people that specifically talked to us. One person said, I just prefer that we keep up to date on things. And if we don't have money, we can't. Another respondent said, we have to keep what we have. We like our town, and it deserves to be taken care of. Let's kind of pull at the heartstrings a little bit there. So they're, they're really just talking more generally about improving the city, updating the city, revitalizing the city, having a better city. But that's the, that's the biggest response category. When we talk, when, when they talk about specifics, the biggest thing that they talk about is the parks, the Anderson Park, the Recreation Center in particular. That's thirteen percent. And again, I'm only talking about the yes voters. So they really like the, the Anderson Park and the Recreation Center. One respondent said, Anderson Park has a good pool. I think it helps a lot of people. It gives something for the kids to do. So there's some pretty straightforward, honest responses. We're, we also see another group that says it's needed, the work needs to get done. And I think it's important when you're talking about increasing taxes for a ballot measure, you have to have a sense, a feeling from voters that it's something that's necessary, that's needed. And they're telling us that directly. And in particular, if you look underneath that, ten percent talk about the infrastructure, road and street repairs and bridges and sewers as being something specific that's needed, that improves, that updates, that makes the city better. And we get another ten percent that talk about the tax increase not being that high, that we need the revenues. And I think, I don't typically see a response like that when people talk about a tax increase. In this case, I think voters in, in Wheat Ridge are, are thinking that, you know, that this isn't really that high, considering what they're gonna get out of it. Okay, there's, there's a value there that they're seeing. And I, and I, and that's ten percent of all respondents who said that's the reason they're gonna vote for it. They didn't think the tax was that high. And so then, if you look on, if you look on the right-hand side, we also asked the no voters, that thirty-seven percent that said they would vote no, we said, we asked them why. And, and the biggest portion of that is that they just don't like taxes. So you're always gonna get that. So thirty-eight percent, almost four in ten of those who say they're gonna vote no, say it's because they just don't, they just don't like ta- taxes. Another twenty-one percent talk about the traffic and parking on Thirty-Eighth Avenue as being a concern of those. That's one in five of those who say no. And, and then you get another one in five that talk about the revenues being managed poorly or incorrectly. So we typically get that, the tax idea that you're not managing revenues or, or that it's a waste of money. That's just a pretty typical response of those who are, are looking at a tax increase. And I want to go on to the next slide. Now, I want to tell you, I want to show you here, this is, this is a pretty fascinating question. We said, I want you to think about the amount you pay in local taxes for the services and amenities that you receive as a resident of Wheat Ridge. Do you feel you're asked to pay more than you should, about the right amount, or less than you should? And here, three out of four voters answer in the middle there that they pay about the right amount. And that is a really high number for any town. So they're, they're seeing a lot of value in, in the taxes that they too, that they pay. And remember, in this question, we're just talking about the local taxes and fees that you pay for the services that you receive. Remember earlier, we were talking about how they feel pretty good about all, almost all the services that we tested in this poll. We get a majority that are saying you're doing an excellent, a good job, especially when it comes to the Recreation Center and the, the Services for Youth and the Elderly and those types of things. We only had one item where we didn't get a majority saying excellent or good. So it's not surprising to me that we have this number, but I think it's indicative to how the voters are feeling about taxes. They're not feeling overtaxed at this point in time. And that's why in that previous question, when they say they're gonna vote yes, you get a, a good chunk saying, hey, this isn't a really big tax. So I want to go on to the next slide and just talk about, we asked, we read twelve different details of the measure and asked what, if, if that, if hearing that as being part of the ballot measure makes them more likely or less likely to support the measure. So remember, we started fifty-seven percent support. And here, we're gonna, the numbers that I give you here are the percent that say they're more likely to vote for the measure based on hearing that. So if you look at, at the top, the critical infrastructure project is, is really what rates at, at the top here. So when we say it'll fund critical infrastructure projects and allow Wheat Ridge to maintain, improve roads, bridges, and stormwater drainage systems, seventy-three, seventy-three percent, almost three out of four voters, say they're more likely to vote for it because of that. And including thirty-nine percent that are much more likely. So there's some intensity on these critical infrastructure projects. And that's true of younger voters, of older voters, and across all political persuasions. This, that is why this one rates near the top, because it's important to everyone. And, and it doesn't matter if we talk about the critical infrastructure projects or the catch-up on critical products that, projects that have been delayed. Those top two items, you get seven out of ten, almost three out of four, saying they're more likely to, because of that. If you look at the, the item on the bottom there, we also talk about the measure will attract businesses and create jobs by funding urban renewal projects at Ward Road and I-70, Forty-fourth and Wadsworth, and near the commuter rail station. So we're talking about different areas around the city where we could do urban renewal projects. We get sixty-four percent saying they're more likely, including thirty-seven percent saying much more likely. So again, there's some intensity there on, on feelings about if that is included. So we're just trying to, we're just trying to give you some of the, we give the voters the details. They're telling us what the priorities are in terms of their vote. If we go to the next slide, I want to, the second priority is at the top of the page there. We, we said this measure will fund improvements to Anderson Park, and we gave some specific details about the pool, the locker rooms, play area, amphitheater, event space. Sixty-five percent, almost two-thirds, say they're more likely, including thirty-eight percent saying much more likely. And remember, in the previous slide, the, the Anderson Park was one of the thing, among those who voted, said they were gonna vote yes, that was one of the top items that they specifically mentioned themselves about why they would vote yes. If we talk about parks and recreation in general, we get sixty-two percent with not as much intensity, only thirty-one percent more likely. Public safety, remember, we know that, that voters feel safe. Here, we get sixty percent with twenty-nine percent more likely. And it act, if we talk about, we also asked about improvements to the Act of Adel Community Center, and here we get fifty-eight percent. So we're dropping off, if you remember from the previous slide, we had seventy-three percent more likely on the infrastructure projects, and now we're starting to drop down to a fifty-one percent, I mean, I'm sorry, fifty-four percent, fifty-eight percent for the Act of Adel Community Center, with only twenty-five percent much more likely. On the next slide, we have the lower priorities. We asked about improvements to the current Recreation Center, and here, we get fifty-six percent saying they're more likely. We also asked about a satellite recreation center on the east side of town, and we get a similar number, fifty-four percent majority saying they're more likely. And at the bottom of the list is investing in developing the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Quarter. Here, we get fifty-four percent, and we also talked about further revitalization of Thirty-Eighth Avenue Quarter, and we get just over a majority, fifty-one percent that say they're more likely. Now, so that just gives you top to bottom, if you're gonna go forward with this measure, what voters are telling you their priorities are. They're saying, I'm more, more likely, three out of four, more likely for the critical infrastructure, about half more likely when we talk about Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Now, that doesn't mean that voters don't support the revitalization of Thirty-Eighth Avenue. I want to read one other question I don't have in the presentation. But we did ask voters, Wheat Ridge is planning to make improvements to Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Marshall and Wadsworth by adding landscaping, outdoor seating areas, and wider sidewalks in order to revitalize the area into a Main Street business district. Do you favor or oppose this plan? Sixty-three percent said they favor the plan, and thirty-three percent said they oppose the plan. So it's by almost two to one, they favored the plan to make improvements to Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So I don't, I don't want this to come across as being that folks are opposed to Thirty-Eighth Avenue revitalization. It's just on the list of priorities, it's closer to the bottom. The last thing I want to say, this is my last slide, I promise. We also asked, in terms of how we're gonna talk about this, we wanted, we wanted the voters to tell us what they think is the best way to talk about it. We said, which one of the following statements is a better reason to support the ballot measure? On the left-hand side, sixty-two percent agreed. The best reason to support the measure is that Wheat Ridge continues to be a great place to live and raise a family. Other towns have invested in improvements, and Wheat Ridge has lost its competitive edge. Now's the time for Wheat Ridge to invest in projects that attract businesses, improve the quality of life, and keep our roads safe. So they're looking towards the future of Wheat Ridge. Sixty-two percent of voters. Twenty-two percent of voters agreed with a message talking about budget shortfall. The city has been forced to defer work. Without increased revenue, the city will need to make cuts to important programs like police, parks, recreation, and postpone work on roads and bridges. So it's by thr- almost three to one, they, on the left-hand side, they prefer, as the reason to vote for it, is to look towards the future, towards investment in projects for equality of life, keeping the roads safe, that kind of thing, rather than thinking about the budget deficit or the budget shortfalls, or what you're gonna have to cut. Yes?
So I, I want to just go back for a second, understand in just a little bit more detail how to read the slides that talk about the, if the statement makes you more likely or less likely to vote for the measure. And just understand it in the context. I'm, I'm looking, I'm flipping between, it doesn't really matter. I just picked the, the first one, road, bridge, and storm drainage projects. And I'm looking at the one percent sales tax increase, and we've got fifty-eight percent of the people in support, thirty-six in opposition. And you mentioned, obviously, that it's that twenty-eight percent who are probably in lean yes. And I just want to confirm that if you're a definite yes, more likely doesn't matter, right? I mean, you, you're definite, so more or less likely is not even an issue. So what, I just want to be clear if that's kind of how that works. Like, these questions or these statements are, are pointed to the, to the twenty-eight percent who are probable, or to the thirty-six percent who are no.
No, these questions were asked of everyone.
Right.
What is your top priority? In other words, if I say seventy-three percent say that they're more likely to vote for it for critical infrastructure projects, that's seventy-three percent of all voters.
Okay, right. You asked it of everyone, but we can use it as, we can use it as guidance more specifically for the, for the, for the slices of, of the pie that we're trying to create the more likely response to, right? I mean, and it's not the thirty percent, it's the twenty-eight and the, and the thirty-six. But you asked the question of everyone.
I agree. I think, you know, we, we've got to make sure, like I said, to hold on to that thirty percent.
Okay.
But you also have to make sure that you have items in here that, you know, that reach out to a greater number of voters in terms of what their priority is.
So I, I, I'm not sure that these, the question will be answered today, but maybe it's something that we can look into. We, we did propose a few years back, a bond measure for drainage. Failed miserably. It's, it, it seems though at this point, people are starting to become a bit more aware of, of the problems. You know, Patrick, what, four, four years ago?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight. Oh, wow, longer than I thought. So six years ago. But do we know, I mean, I don't remember where we sat on that one, but I know it failed by more than fifty percent.
It did, but just, just to clarify too, it, it, it was thrown on the, the ballot, and there wasn't any-
Any education?
Education or campaign to get behind it, so.
No, I, I, I just, I guess I'm glad to see that people are starting to understand that there's more to our problems than just simply making our city look pretty, that it, it's bones of the city need to be, be helped. And, and while we didn't provide any education on that ballot measure, just this polling survey shows that people are starting to kind of get on track with that.
Mayor, if I may answer the councilwoman's question, or, or expand on it. Councilwoman, you're absolutely right. I think what, what you've seen in the past couple of years in Colorado with the fires and floods, the, the rain that we had last year, this year, I think that you're seeing constituents not just pay attention to their own personal property, their residential property, they're seeing the impact the flooding is having on the system itself. And so if you can't walk down the street because it's flooding, there's, you know, when they go outside, they see what it does to the parks when you have lots of rain. So I, I think your, your citizens are telling you that they're, they understand, they're getting it, and, and it's a priority.
I just have a question. I know in other cities that you had done studies on, you mentioned that there was a definite difference between different parts of the city, and I'm wondering if that came out in this at all, as far as, do different areas of the city have different opinions on what was needed?
Thank you, councilwoman. I have an opinion, but I'll let Chris go first. Unless you want me to?
Well, I think, you know, if you have particular things you want to look at, we can look at the different areas of the city divided up by council district or whatever, but I think what I, what I noticed in the data was, was strong support throughout the city. There wasn't as much differentiation in support around the city as when I showed you the slide, there was, you know, much more support among younger voters versus older voters. I think that was the one, the one big distinction that I saw. So I don't know if that-
And you mentioned about work that we've done in the past.
And you mentioned about work that we've done in the past. I'll refer back to not only Denver, but Commerce City last November. In Commerce City, when we walked into the community process, which, by the way, this is the beginning, because your city manager and all of you have asked for those continued neighborhood, town hall meetings on the possible proposed ballot major, so that you're getting accurate feedback. And so when we were out in Commerce City, and also in Denver, you, there was a divide there, and I think publicly, we've talked about it in Commerce City, where the north felt like they were getting, the south felt like the north was getting a lot more, new homes, new business, new roads, as you look at their permits and they were building out. Here, I was quite surprised, you didn't see that. What I've read through the pool and after our conversation with Chris, you have a very proud community here, you don't have one group telling you that they're not getting something that the others not, and, and that's a compliment to all of you and your, and your city team, because in, in past, we've seen where that, you can see it come to the top clearly and, and quickly. I hope that answers your questions with a couple of examples.
It does, because I was curious if that was going to show up in the polling, a device, division between different geographic areas. And then my other question has to do with, on page seven, where you say, the question regarding traffic flow and congestion are concerns, and the bottom one, where sixty-two percent were unfavorable toward improving, or the, how well is the Wheat Ridge City Government doing on, in the traffic flow? And then, could we correlate that to the one on page sixteen, where that's the top concern for, I mean, that infrastructure, improve roads, water, drainage systems? And that, I'm just trying, was this correlated to any special area of the city, or just in general?
Are you talking about the traffic?
Yes.
I, I think, I think we could, we could look at that, but I think, in order to get a number where you have sixty-two percent saying fair or poor, it's pretty, it's pretty widespread around the city. That's sentiment, but I'm not sure if, you know, I don't know if we can relate that to, they're most likely to say, you know, they're more likely to support the measure if it includes the roads, bridges, and drainage. I don't know if that's correlated with this feeling of congestion or not.
I don't want to harp on this, but just one more question about methodology. Did you use the voter list for top ballot voters, or did you, did you narrow it down to bottom ballot measures such as propositions and-
Or municipal?
Right.
We looked at, in terms of who is going to vote?
Right. Because who votes at the top doesn't necessarily have too much correlation with who votes at the bottom.
Well, no, we looked at, in terms of turnout in, in this upcoming midterm, if we were to put it on the ballot this November, it would be on the ballot with the governor's race, the senate race-
Yeah, I know, but you didn't exclude-
Did you look at the people who voted in municipal?
No, no, the biggest, the biggest driver predictor of whether you're going to vote in this election, in this midterm election, is whether you have voted in, in previous midterm elections. That is, that's just-
And that's the essence of the question, did you narrow this down to midterm elections? Or, no, excuse me, I see what you're saying, that is not what I was, where I was going. Larry's talking about voters who vote for city measures, which is very different from people who vote for presidential and gubernatorial majors.
Right. And, and so you, what you do when you, you kind of set the methodology, you look for the most similar election that you think the demographic turnout is going to be. And since you're having this in a midterm general election in November, the best predicting election was the two thousand and ten. So what Chris Winton did is looked at the demographic breakdowns on all of those separate items that, that he highlighted, ethnicity, age, geographic representation, and matched that two thousand and ten election perfectly. So I understand now where you were going with respect to, you know, maybe some of your other municipal elections, if they weren't done on a midterm, may have had a higher percentage of age demographic. But the number that we pulled from, directly from the abstract in two thousand and ten of Wheat Ridge had it at sixty-two percent.
Just one follow-up, then, in, in your, your work in Commerce City, was there a correlation between your testing and the result of the election?
We got the exact number that we had on the final informed vote to, I mean, I think exactly.
Councilman, you, that's a great question, first of all, and I, I think it comes back to, to your team that the managers assembled, and you have Colan who's participated in over a hundred polls, and then Keating coming back, I think it comes back to my statement earlier at the beginning when we started the presentation. We went, and you know this, because we've got into quite the discussion in the, in the one-on-ones, you're, what you're seeing now from Chris, we, if the election was held today, this number would, and those items were listed, okay? Not, I'm not, can't say, because you've instructed us that you still have a community process that you want us to engage in, so no pre, there's no preset determination of what it's going to look like when you refer to the measure, should you choose to do so. But the snapshot is, it was, it was really close. Yes. Yes, so I just want to, to answer, I want to make sure we answer your question.
One thing I would add on that, I mean, I think when we look at fifty-seven percent today, in this poll was conducted just last week, this, we're talking to people on their phone, and they haven't heard about this before. We're just calling them up, and they're reacting to it. So we get a majority, fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent reacting, saying they would vote yes. That's a good sign. That does not, you know, from here to now, it's everybody's job in here, if you're going to go forward, to sell it, to keep that, but that does not necessarily mean that's what the number's going to be in, in November. Is that fair to say?
I, I think the, the number is more indicative of the, what we normally call the informed vote. So we asked the question at the beginning of the poll, where, where they haven't received any information. And then at the end, after you've asked, you know, upwards of forty questions relating to that measure, they're being educated over that one phone call. So that informed vote tends to be much closer to the actual outcome of the election, and I think that's the one that we probably were just pounding about, that the informed vote was, I think, to a T. So really, what that assumes is, if all of your messaging worked out exactly as you outlined it in the poll, that your opposition also communicated exactly as you predicted that they would communicate, that's what you call your informed vote, and that one was right where we thought it would be.
I want to encourage everybody to continue asking questions, and, and yet, I also want to, and there's no really and yet, what I, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know, this discussion and the continued community meetings, are we at this point looking at certain directions and, like a continued polling, or is it more informative going forward? Or is that, did that come too fast? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and Manager. Mayor and councilmembers, I think that not only with the, the meetings that you have coming up next week, we had a clear message from all of you and, and the city team, that we'd like to go out and have a town hall meeting to begin to talk about this, and even drill down farther, so that when you are in front of families, and I think, Councilman, to your point earlier about the age of, you know, the, it's being the fifty-plus, I've seen in other initiatives going forward in other cities, you'd be quick, it's amazing to see how fast the energy's created around the families that have come to choose to live here and go to school here, and how they are to become quickly engaged and active as to where, to Colan's point, a general election. So there are still a lot of ups in, in this process that are out there, because I can tell you the energy around Anderson Park, not having a family-changing station, you know, even if you're a grandparent taking your, your grandchildren on a weekday, and you, and you got to take your, your granddaughter into the men's room, and there's no changing, there's no family-changing room. So to your point earlier, I, it'll be interesting to see in the, the town hall meetings, what additional feedback we get, based on how we set up the, the town halls, where we will talk about informing your citizens around the budget, so they clearly understand the one percent, the bonding, should you choose to do so, and then what comes with it. Beginning to talk about the projects of your roads and drainage, we went out and saw your, your, we went to the bike path, and we spent a lot of time with your staff out looking around your city. It's beautiful, but I think the, the citizens are telling you clearly that even the fifty-plus is, there's a value that, the value system that they believe in maintenance, and, and they're willing to, to, to look at that. And so we plan, over the next forty-five days, to work with your staff, create some dates with all of you, so that we can have you in front of the public, walk through the process. We believe that it's, it's really important that the citizens know that you're not, you're taking out a proposed measure, you haven't made up your mind. We hope to get feedback, that we'll then come back. If you make major changes to what's being presented to you in this moment in time from the poll, we would then do another round of town halls, so that the citizens are clearly seeing that they were heard, that the selected body is responding, and should you all choose unanimously to move a measure to the ballot, that you'll be able to stand up at any time and say, we had the process, we went out, we explained to the citizens what were important, most important is, we heard the citizens tell us what they thought was important, and, and we went back twice. And, and not just twice specifically, but twice in a process where there's multiple meetings. And quite frankly, the leadership sitting at this table will be instrumental in delivering that message, along with your team, and then the consultants that will be working with you to make sure that, that engagement, that community engagement process has some accountability, so that when you come back, you'll be able to highlight, in the fall, when you decide, should you decide, and I think that's important to the folks listening, should you decide as a body, that you're moving forward for the right reasons, and at this moment in time, your citizens are telling you what's important to you. And so we're really looking forward to that, those next steps, and we're planning to be, the city manager has asked us to be available next week, to kind of highlight the community process that's just, that's starting. And by the way, I, I say starting, there has been a lot of work over the years to get to this moment in time, by not only all of you, but your citizens and the folks who choose to live here and engage the community. And so when we say start the process, we're, we're talking about kind of narrowing down what that package, should you choose, what it's going to look like, and, and, and the one percent versus the half percent. And, and, and I've heard from all of you, the mayor and everyone, that we, it's important to all of you to really hear back from the constituents before you move forward. I hope, I, did that answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm getting it as educate, inform, and listen.
Okay.
Is that what we're all getting?
Nice presentation. What role does specificity in the, in the questions that we ask, how do you, how do you understand that?
I, I think, Councilman, to answer your question, through the poll, I was surprised that there, there, they don't, there wasn't one specific project that was highlighted, but yet your citizens are telling you that they know it's important, and it's time to do something, without having a list of projects in front of you. I've been in, I've been, participated in bonds over the last eighteen years, where you went out and had A through I, and they were very specific. It'll be interesting to see, after we come back from the town hall meetings, what the citizens tell you about how they want it packaged, because I think that's an important piece. And then, and then I think the Parks and Rec one, on Anderson Park, that is one where they're, they're telling you, these are some of the things they would like to see. They are telling you that they would like to see the roads and drainage problems. To me, you know, it's wonderful driving up Twenty-Ninth, because you really do feel like you're in a quaint part of the world, and, and, and folks like to keep that, that's what, they, they don't want to give that up. There are citizens in your areas that like, that do like the sidewalks. So I think I compliment all of you, that there's been a balance over the years, that you've been able to not divide the city, but still hold some of the true values of this place. And so it'll be interesting to hear what the citizens tell us. You know, I, I have friends from all over the city that love riding through Wheat Ridge on their bicycles. It'll be interesting to see that when we start on the town hall meetings, that they tell us what that looks like to them, and, and so I don't, I don't know if I have the answers specifically, but they're telling you that they trust you, they believe that you all are doing the right thing, along with your city manager and your city team. It's a very safe place, and they're, they're, they have, I guess what I'm trying to tell you, Councilman, is you've built up some credibility with your constituents, all of you, that they're willing to engage in moving forward to, to kind of preserve what Wheat Ridge is, or what it's been, been up to, built up to be. I hope, I don't know if I've answered your question specifically, but-
I think, I think directly, we typically see more specificity is advantageous in a ballot process. So as I think we mentioned, you know, in many of our, our meetings with you folks, I'm always shocked at what comes out of the polling process. There's something that usually does surprise me. And at the end of the day, probably the most surprising is that you have built up credibility, that, that in their top priorities, they're not asking for specificity. And so at some level, I think you have some freedom to lead with respect to that, which you don't typically see, and I, I think probably Chris would, would re-articulate that. So, you know, I, I think it's important that you're asking that question, because I think from listening to your constituents, you have to find that balance of what, whether, how much general application can you have in, in the ballot measure, and then really how many of the top priority projects need to be specified.
And Mayor, and Councilmembers, as we have this conversation, it's almost like we're thinking out loud with you, it's, I, I look back to a ballot measure when Mayor Webb in Denver went twice on a new jail. And I think, I don't know if you remember that, or if you were here, but if you go back and look, the numbers were, were not, I mean, they were fifty, they were over fifty percent, but at that moment in time, the administration did not clearly define where they were going to be, right? They knew they needed a new jail, they were looking at multiple locations, and quite frankly, and not until the new, the next administration came in after them. And a lot of that work had been done, because there was an education process. When you lose something like that, there's a value to it, because your, 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 your citizens become more informed than they were before, because how many times you hit the door. But then when they got down to spec, you know, clearly defining the, what they were looking for, the size, and support from the community, then it passed. And so I've seen it go both ways, I've seen where the, there wasn't a dollar amount to the nineteen ninety-eight bond initiatives, I saw A through I in Denver in two thousand and six, where there were, in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, there, there was a line item next to it, not necessarily a location, but a, a dollar amount, and what the need was, and to, to earn the citizens' trust. In Commerce City, they did highlight some specific projects, but it, but it wasn't clearly defined. For example, in Commerce City in November, through the community process, we found out that even though they had a rec center in the south, there was a new pool needed, because it was competing with the senior program hours. Well, at the same time, you had a, a very heavy, heavy Latino community telling you that they wanted, they wanted something for their youth to do, which, through that community engagement process, we found out a pool kind of morphed from those town hall meetings, and so when they went to the bond, or went to the ballot, they included a new pool in the southern part of the district, and, as well as a new rec center in the north. And, and, and it wasn't clearly defined on where, where it was going to be, but the need was defined- And it wasn't clearly defined on where it was going to be, but the need was defined. And so, it really depends on your education and information process, once you decide to make a decision to move forward.
And I just want to pull this thread a little bit further, and maybe just restate it and make sure that I heard it right, because I think it's a great question from Mr. Starker. But what I see, and I'm trying to kind of repeat back to you what I heard you say, is that if I look at the top priority, road, bridge, storm, drainage projects, the top, you know, response there is a non-specific statement. And so, you know, what I'm hearing you say is that there's some built-up trust, and in this case, you might be able to be non-specific in the statement, and still actually drive a more likely positive response.
Yes.
Yeah, Councilman, yes. And what they're telling you is that should you decide to go forward in asking for, I'm going to use the 1% in this example, that they're telling you that if you definitely use the money for these types of projects, then you have a majority of support willing to back you up.
Kind of, our next part of it was, is really, is where we go from here. It sounds like we do, it's information out to the public via the meetings that we've got scheduled, and what else?
Mayor and council members, one, thank you for tonight. It was, I love the numbers when it comes up, because I was surprised on actually how high they were in most cases. And so, now that we've presented the poll information to you, when we met with the city manager and your team, we talked about, and I think it came from this body, that you all want to make sure that, to exhaust the community process, and engage the community in a way that allows them to have a voice. So what our next steps are, is we will be working with the team and all of you for scheduling purposes, and make sure that we have certain ample time of notification in multiple meetings, so that if someone can't get there on one night, they'll be able to get there on another night. We will begin to work with your staff to set up some town hall meetings, where we will present, should you decide, and I want to make sure that we keep saying that, and I know you'll get tired of me saying that, but it's important for your citizens to know. Right now, what you have all told us is the decision has not been made. You like to have the town hall meetings. We will go out and present the framework, and allow the citizens to even provide, not only the presentation that you're considering this proposal of a 1%, and I would put it into parks and recs, bridges and roads, and separate those two into two categories, you just present them, and the other items that are out there, that are on the list, that are important to the city, where you put lots and time and energy into. And then, and really, that, I don't like to talk about what it's going to look like, because only until you get to that meeting, at the end of the meeting, you kind of know what feedback you had. And I think it's an addition, it's one, and another layer for those folks to provide you an opportunity of what they believe is the right direction, and what they would like to see for their city. And so, we will be working with notifications, email, we've talked about possibly, and Patrick, if I may, getting out, making sure that we do exhaust all resources, so that folks know about the town hall meetings. And so, and then, once those town hall meetings are done, we were hoping that you'd call back, kind of, we'll run through what the citizens were telling you, frame this out a little more, and then, if it's opposite of what we're hearing tonight, then we've built into the calendar, working backwards from when it would be a referred measure, that there would be another round of town hall meetings, and so that when you, should you make that final decision, we will have exhausted the community process, so that folks know that it was fair.
Yeah, and if I may, Mayor, real quickly, today, the only two meetings we really have scheduled on the books are Monday night, our district meetings, and our team here is going to come to that, and that'll kind of be an introduction to our citizens that we've started this process. We also have a town hall meeting scheduled for the fifth Monday in September, that will be after, if you decide to move forward, that will be after the ballot language has been set. The ballot language has to be to the county on September 5th. I believe we have first reading and second reading scheduled in August, so we're backing up from that first meeting in August, when we'll have first reading on the ballot language. So, we need to really strategize on meetings in between today, or Monday basically, and the 1st of August, to figure out what types of meetings we can have, and if we just have district meetings, or full town hall meetings, or whatever. And we'll continue working on that to get some dates down.
And these slides and this information is available to the public on the website?
Or? It's not yet, but it is, it's a public document. It hasn't, I'm getting a funny look from Ms. Calamino back there. Hadn't been presented to you yet, so we didn't make it fully available to the public yet, so after tonight's meeting, it will be, yes.
Patrick, just a couple of questions, so, I guess I can ask you folks too. So you guys are going to be at our meetings on Monday? All right? So that's nice to hear. And then, I guess my other suggestion would be, I would like to see us set, you know, some Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday type of meetings. And I know, like, our Monday night meeting, I'm a little worried as far as how many people we'll have there, because we didn't send postcards. I know we put it in the newspaper and that kind of stuff, and I understand at some point expense, but I'm just wondering, and hoping that perhaps if we set some meetings, that we set them, you know, today, tomorrow, whenever, and then we send out a postcard that has, like, all three dates, all three locations, or four locations, four dates, or whatever it might be. But I think that might be a good value, you know, to set out those meetings. Yeah, yeah, do it once with all the dates, just a suggestion.
Yeah, actually, I want to agree with that comment, and if it's poss, understanding now a little bit better the timeline, which is actually still relatively tight, it sounds like, basically July, we have some, you know, some work to do to get some of these initial meetings conducted. I think if we can solve some of these things, then in the next couple of days, it would be good to be armed with some of these dates on our Monday meetings next week, so that we can start the communication about definitively, about what the next steps are next Monday. I mean, that would be my...
Yeah, actually, these gentlemen said the same thing, and it's like, I'm not sure if we can all agree to dates by then or not, but if you guys think we can, that would be terrific.
I'm willing to try.
Okay, so if we can, we can work on that, yep.
Patrick, are you working on, is staff working on any props for our Monday meeting?
We are.
You are?
Yep. Hand puppets and...
Mayor, to the town hall meetings, what we found, in, like, let's say, for example, we tried to do a town hall meeting every night for, you know, the middle of the week, for those who can't always get there. We'd see a nice, steady turnout, and then, there, one meeting in Commerce City, we had five people there. But it was the most important meeting for those five people, because it was the day that, it was the only day that they were off. And so, our experience with this is, we will set up multiple meetings, giving your constituents an opportunity to be there. We probably do a couple during the week, we'll pick one on a Saturday, we'll stagger them across the city, so that it's fair for those traveling, and then we'll do our best to get it out. But we've done that community process for a number of communities, and so, I don't want to underscore, just when you see one or two people there, because it becomes extremely important to those folks. Sometimes their community leader going back reporting a whole neighborhood. And so, even though it's light turnout, we give our heart to every single meeting, and we'll present consistency when we're in those town halls.
And to make it maybe convenient and easy, I mean, we can work together with these gentlemen to come up with some dates, and you all won't be able to probably be at every meeting anyway, so we could set some dates over, through August, get them out to you in the next day or two, you know, and give a thumbs up, then we could have them for Monday. We don't anticipate you being at every meeting, right? And I mean, you don't either, you don't...
If you're okay if I answer, yes, that is correct. What we've had in the past, we had, the last November, council agreed that they kind of split it up in teams of three, and they just, so not everyone was there, but they were representing the council as a whole. And then, this way, there was coverage, they could hear from their elected officials, and at the same time, be there to also be accountable to us, making sure we were presenting the same information as we did the last meeting. And so, dividing it up that way has worked well in the past. And then, one night, we did happen to have a majority of council members, but most folks tended to want to be as, attend the meetings as much as they could, but obviously, with work schedules and whatnot, it depends.
Did you say dates through August, even though, did you mean dates through July? Through the 1st of August. Your first reading will be sometime, I think, the first meeting in August, first regular meeting in August, so...
Going through the process and still educating.
Yep, yep.
So would one of these meetings, they're not all possibly in the evening, I'm guessing the majority of them would be in the evening, but like, we could have one at the senior center or something during the day, or something like that? I mean, especially since a lot of our voters might, just a thought.
Councilwoman, you were actually, you were spot on. We actually, in our proposal, when we meet with Patrick, we always conduct one of the, we actually picked it, when the seniors were using the rec center, and we had a great turnout. And so, we'll try to do a couple during the day, and we'll try to do a couple in the evening, and we know that for folks who have family and jobs, the Saturday morning meeting becomes extremely important, or midday. And so, we will make sure to set the schedule that allows a window. We did have folks that worked on weekends, so that they, in the past, they have come during the day, during the middle of the week. And so, it wasn't always specifically for an audience that you expected.
As a great community organization, what's the possibility of you attending those meetings and making a brief presentation? Are you very optimistic?
Councilman, yes, we would absolutely participate in that.
Given that Kim is here in the audience, Kim Calamino, and I know this is out of left field, but this is just to think about, given the fact that the result here shows that we've built up some credibility, should we also consider tackling height and density?
Yeah. Councilman, to answer, I, as your consultant, looking at doing the right thing for the city in this moment in time and its needs, I know that is a huge issue, everybody talked about it when we met with everyone. I would tell you that as a, as my, as an individual team member, I would probably save that and put some time into it for a later date. I don't know how all of you feel about that, and I might be putting myself out there with you, but if you're going to engage your citizens with a serious ask of 1%, if that's what you choose to do, there is a, there's a lot of messaging behind that. In the last November, and then two cycles ago, 1% of sales tax means that your citizens aren't all paying for it. The folks traveling through your city are helping to contribute to your budget, because they're actually traveling and using your roads. Some folks might be using your rec centers. And so, I know Denver folks come over to Anderson. And so, I would tell you to be cautious about mixing an issue that might deserve its own limelight. And I'm, hopefully, I'm saying that respectfully enough, in answering your question honestly.
Looking for your advice, definitely, on that topic, and it's, you know, it's, maybe the community meetings, we may hear something different, and we still have time, but we want that recommend, we want your opinion on it.
And I think to add on to it, I would say, that although there's lots of positive things to look at in what we saw in the results here, the number isn't one in which we could afford too much leakage. And so, I would, to echo RD, I would say, obviously, we all know where there's constituencies in both opposition and proponents of some of the charter change issues, and I would say that if you just look at that anywhere between 56 and 58, I would caution that that, any loss whatsoever of those numbers would have dramatic impact on your 1% probably.
Mayor?
Yeah.
And this would be my final, hopefully, over the, through the next community process round of town hall meetings, that, you know, as your consultant, I will tell you, it will be extremely important, that if this body can be unified on the ballot measure, that it helps. It helps the citizens, it helps the issue, it helps the folks that will look back and go, those leaders at that moment in time, as a body, they made the right decisions for not only the Wheat Ridge today, but for the future. And so, I would be remiss if I did not say that, because coming off of Commerce City, when we did the first round of polling, I think you heard this when you met with them, they didn't have everybody on board the night we presented the poll. Where we were able to gain support, because it wasn't just us saying it, it was the town hall meetings, the council members could really hear that the citizens wanted to do something better for the future of that city. And I think that, you know, through the poll, you're definitely hearing that now. And so, I just, I want to highlight that, because any issues, obviously, any issues that gets, that's put on the table, that would divide the leadership and the community, it's obvious, but it makes it that much tougher when you're trying to do the right thing at this moment in time.
So, just another question, kind of going back to the unity of the council, and also, what I'm kind of referring, what I'm going to go into is more, what is a success of setting up a situation, or if, I don't know, if we intended a ballot question, that we, like, divvy it up? You know, like, if you, so, like, if, to me, it complicates things. And kind of by what you were saying earlier, that it sounds like people are, we don't have to be specific, like, A, you know, .02 percent, .02 cents goes to A, and .04 cents goes to B, and that's going to sunset after, you know, 2020, and, you know, I guess when things get really convoluted, and sunset this, and divvy this, how have you seen that process, and what's your recommendation?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to make sure I'm really clear. The only thing I'm saying is that your odds are better when you have a unanimous council supporting a specific measure. And so, I'm not, I think what your citizens are telling you is, they're okay with designating a 1% for these two, for these categories, right? Roads, drainage, and parks and rec. That's very rare, when we've done this in the past, to have this type of support out the gate. And so, I'm just saying that there's an opportunity, and I think through the one-on-ones, and being fair to everybody that we met with, because we met with all of you, is everybody wants to do the right thing, and there is consensus about doing something this fall, but they wanted to hear from the constituents. And so, I don't know, I'm not talking about last year, I'm just talking about this moment in time, should you choose to do this specific measure, but to your point, you are correct. They believe that if you ask for 1%, the citizens are telling you that if in these categories, there is support.
Well, and I would, to get directly at your issue...
Yeah, I think I had two questions. One question, forget the one question.
On the separation of all the different items.
When you separate, and then I'm going to sunset for...
Right, well...
When you separate, and then I'm going to sunset for, you know, this and those kind of things. I mean, how, is that successful, or if it's like, let it go?
Well, I think it depends. I mean, I think what, you start with the concept that campaigns cost money. And at the end of the day, the more campaigns you have, the more individual messages that you need to go out and raise resources to fund. I think if the overall ballot question, when we pooled them all together, was sitting at lower than a 50%, I think we would need to come and reevaluate what to pull out and what to separate. Because if there were items that were going to survive on their own, that wouldn't survive in a pool, we needed to look at that. So that's on the separation issue. I think we probably got over a big hurdle from just a cost and a philosophic standpoint with the numbers that we're seeing in the overall ballot measure. With respect to the sunset provision, and I know that Chris has spoken, you know, at length on our calls with this, if you look at how the voters are responding in this poll, I think it's indicative that they wouldn't be supportive of a sunset provision because what they're saying is there are maintenance needs that they know they need to fund, and they want to empower council to make that decision. That runs counter to a whole concept of sunset of funds. I mean, typically, when you see sunset of fund issues, it's when they want the specificity that we were speaking about earlier, to know that this money was going to be spent on one project, one project alone, and here was the dollar amount. That isn't the answer that we're receiving here. So although we didn't ask the sunset question directly, I think there's lots of information within the poll that would somewhat reject the idea that this, that this should be sunset.
I would agree with that, but I wanted to check with you if there was recommendations of adding that kind of language or anything.
Yeah, and I think, I think I'd echo what Colin was saying. I think when you, when you look at this poll, they're really talking about maintenance needs, infrastructure needs, and understanding that we need to improve the city. And you can't do that over the long term. And I think when we look at the final question that I showed you, they're really looking towards the future of making a great city and understanding what that means. And you can't do that by putting in some kind of a limit on, on what you're actually going to be able to accomplish going down the road. So I would, I would echo and say that when you're looking at this, and the number one item, far and away that they talk about, is the critical infrastructure, road repair, maintenance, storm, drainage, sewers in this poll. And it has some intensity, but behind it, 39% saying they're much more likely to vote for the measure if it has that on there. And that does not lend itself to some kind of a sunset situation on the bonding. If you were, if we were talking about bonding something and building a library, and then, you know, you pay for the capital costs, maybe that would be the case. You might want to think about doing a sunset, and then you can use the money for something else. But in this case, we're talking about critical infrastructure projects, and they're going backwards and saying, hey, we haven't had the money in that one question that we asked, we haven't had the money to be able to accomplish what we've needed to do. That runs counter to having some kind of a specified period of time.
I think this opening question is Wheat Ridge heading in the right direction. And we had a very strong response to that, that they were. I think that's indicating that the city inhabitants or the citizens are proud of our city, and they wanted to continue that direction, that they, they're aware that revitalization is important, and as well as being able to maintain. And of course, our city manager has been hammering on the point for years that road maintenance, funds for that, that level of capital improvement have been, we've been struggling in that area. So I think our citizens are, really want us to work that direction. Mr. Schultz.
Okay, I'll start over. You couldn't have done this survey a year ago and gotten these results. And it's because we have a different council. You folks have developed a sense of confidence with the residents of Wheat Ridge that I have not seen exist before in the community. I was on council from 3:00 to 7:00. It was stormy. And I've been off since then. But over time, it's obvious, we now have a council that speaks about issues for the sake of the issues, speaks about the community for the sake of the community, and does not sit there worrying about each other. And you should be proud. You also have a responsibility to maintain that. So developing this sense of unity and continuing that level of honesty is extremely important. I mean, you're on the verge of doing something really hot here for this community. And it's terribly important, and you are terribly important to it. So thank you, and hang in there. You can get this done.
Thank you, Larry. Do, do we need to do any, any setting up of meetings at this point, or is that, okay? So is there any other, do we, can we adjourn? I'm getting yes all the way around?
So moved.
It's a, the meeting's adjourned. Thanks to everybody for coming tonight.